Oh my lord. Hi, I've been talking this entire. Bro. Yeah, you could go there. At least he has a mic and shit. Hi chat. I said hi to all of you, but well, nobody heard. I did. Aw, you ain't shit. You, you pulled it? Aw, he died. Oh, he's alive, never mind. Aw, you get smacked? You still, your tits is still working? Cause mine isn't. I have to update, but I can't find the receipt. So I have to, I have to buy it again. Oh, okay. Okay. Aw. I wish, I wish Millsy asked me to say fireball and then had it as like, uh, like a tier three sub alert. I said no. You know, I try it. Hi, weena. And everybody else in chat already say hi to, but nobody heard. I said hi. We need to find so many friends, man. I mean, you could do like two, but I feel like this is funny if you get a full up, yeah. I don't know, like as many people as we can gather and then, yeah, it's up to four before, yeah. Aw, man. Tonight. Yeah, I really, I just, I think it's really important for the lore that I play with Millsy. I'm so glad, bro, I'm so glad I don't have V Bridger, cause you would see, you would see my cheek puff. Yeah, it was fun. Balloon cheeks, damn. But she was playing super, I don't think you were awake. And she was also playing with, uh, with May and I think May was just teaching them, like her and Cal. Uh, she left cause she wanted to keep some, some, uh, some surprise for stream. I think so, yeah. I mean, that she, she said that she wanted to keep some for stream, so I'm assuming she will. Oh, yeah, maybe. I don't torture Millsy. I'm a good friend. Yeah, cause I definitely don't. No, what clip? Nothing happened. I feel like all the, the stupidest shit I've ever done, Millsy was always there, man. Yeah. You know what's crazy? One of my friends that has like nothing to do with, with like, he never, well, I wouldn't say he never watched the special, but we don't like hang out a lot or anything. And he, he, he had that clip. He whipped it out so fucking fast when I mentioned it on stream and I was like, what do you mean? How do you find it faster than I did? Hi, Ari. I was so flabbergasted. I was just like, what, what? Why do you have this on fucking speed dial? What do you? Oh my god. Hi, John. Oh, this is for, this is for John. Look. Thank you. Why are you giggling? I, I don't think I have it saved anywhere. Oh yeah, for sure, yeah. The, the, I don't wanna say, I'm gonna get yelled at. I feel like you're gonna be upset if I say it. Can you say it, Hika? Millsy's asking what clip? Oh, that one? No, that one's fine. That one, I think you just need to search. Now I'm cooked. Oh no, man. Nah, this one's horrible. It's just so lame, man. I wouldn't have a crayon. I would have already eaten it. It's fine. I can't eat it cause it's digital. But, but, but watch your crayons if you bring them to me. Have you ever eaten crayons? Have you ever eaten them? I, I ate glue before. And a bunch of other shit, actually. I ate paper. Yeah, I, I had a day where I was like, I don't know, man, I was fucking hungry. No, not crayons. I, I, I ate glue and paper. Can you speak, please? I don't like the silence. Oh, but like I just had, you know, see, look, it's, Ari said I ate glue as a kid. See, it's now just me. It's normal. I ate drywall? Okay, no, that's. That is crazy. Dude, Hika explained to me that American walls are, are fragile, cause I saw this, this guy who 3D prints. They're weak, man. They're fucking soft. So I, we. We, we're watching. Right, it is paper. See, he gets it. I saw this guy 3D print, like a little, what was it? A, a, a wall plant. What is it called? Oh, yeah, that. And then he, he printed a little, I'm gonna use all the wrong words here, I'm sorry. This, this is what I got. He printed like a little nipple in the back and then you push it into the wall and then it puts an indent. Ah, cause I don't know what the word is. And then, and you push it into the wall and it makes a little dent and then you know where to like, where to, what's the word, man? Where to drill? Yeah, that, that, ye, ye. And then, and then, um, yeah, in the comments, people are like, so you just, you just push a little bit of plastic into the wall and it makes a dent? And then a bunch of like really funny gifs. Of like, just like very thin walls or very, you know, the walls breaking and shit and I'm so. And I asked Hika, cause I, I'm like, this is so weird. Like, are your walls ass? Yep, this is how I learned. Yeah, this is weird. Now Koinu made it extra weird, cause, cause she ate it. But you know, I respect, so, so it's okay to eat it? What she said? It has a gritty texture like sand. That I love. That is crazy. Oh, we got a Will. Is everything except Leah's voice? Aw, you don't hear? Hika, bro, my shit is bored. Hold on, I got this. No. You know what it is? Cause I had to, this is Dante's fault. I have a culprit, cause I installed Fortnite and then I had to install the Windows update, but it was, it was not working because, do you hear him now? Do you hear Hika?
Hi, hi chat, hi.
It was, let me explain. Damn, John.
That's right, John. Tell her.
I updated my Windows, but my audio mixer, they refused to let me update, so I had to uninstall it. And then, uh, you know, two birds, one stone and I, I updated it, but that means all my audio things got borked. That's why you couldn't hear me. Or Hika. Anyways, y'all haters.
I thought you were gonna be like, say something.
No, I'm used to it. Thank you for the follow. Ari, that's the name of my cousin. What if, what, what if it's this, the, nevermind, whatever. You may speak.
How gracious of you, Leah. Now that I have permission to speak. It's so dumb sometimes.
Oh, no way. Bro. Will comes to stream every time. He redeems his daily payout, gambles all, and if he loses, he just leaves quietly. I just never see him again.
Blink twice if you're trapped in their basement.
You can't see the blink? Dude, he just redeemed his daily payout and now he's back to bed. He gambled and he's back to bed.
Will doesn't need to play gacha. He just gambles in his chat.
I am the gacha. My stream is the gacha. You know what? Good for him. At least he saves money. I feel like if, if either him or I played gacha, we would probably eat water. He says, is that not what we already do?
Well, at least he's honest.
Is that? Do you hear that music?
Yeah, what is it?
It's, it's.
Oh my god. It's Barcore APT. Oh my god, it's so funny. I love hardcore music. He always catches me off guard. This is a weird playlist, Leah.
It says medieval. It says medieval tavern ambient. I guess they just like to listen to APT.
Wait, I can do that.
You can do what?
Don't film me, I bought, there it is.
A dream, a dream of being like Will? In, in what sense? Not spending money in gacha and, and doing it in chat instead? Um, daily payout. Why did this not go through? All my streamer bot is not on. Streaming is hard.
Spent all this time setting up and you didn't, you didn't even ready.
Bro. Nothing was ready, actually. Not even my fucking sound.
This motherfucker was like, are you ready yet?
When did I ever say I was?
But you said it away where I was just like, oh man, I guess she's ready. I gotta hurry my ass up.
Yeah, I was in my heart. Oh wait, this is. What is that called? Yeah. With you. No?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I get it.
That's cute. I like this one.
The very famous TikTok song.
Bro, who are you? The TikTok song? This is your reference? Uh, uh, I don't know. You're telling me like I, I'm on TikTok.
You didn't need to attack me like that. Just trying to have a conversation with you.
There's an update to streamer bot. No. No, 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 no. Um, now I have to do this manually. Streaming is hard. Huh?
So you're very ready today.
Whatever. Oh shit, I was gonna add it to you. Wait, did somebody else redeem? Oh, Will redeemed and he didn't get them. I got him. Add coins. Did I do it right? Oh, I didn't do it.
I'm able to find fifty, fifty cents. That's crazy.
Damn, my boy fifty cents. What?
Wasn't he in that like World of Worlds, War of the Worlds movie recently?
He is in the movie? Aw, I, I have no clue. He already dead asleep. I can't even tell him he got coins to spend.
Let the man sleep, man.
Yeah, I guess.
So needy all the time.
I'm not even.
Trying to lure him back with, with gambling.
No. Maybe a little bit.
Do you guys know that Leah has a really beautiful singing voice?
But. You know that Millsy and Hika said the same thing about my singing without even consulting each other? They both said like, damn, it's crazy that you sound like that, but then you speak like that.
God damn it, stop whining me.
Ah, it's fine. I guess at least half of it was a compliment, you know?
I mean, it, it is. Swear to god, Millsy. Gonna ban my own mod.
What'd he do?
Keeps throwing waffles at me. There he goes again.
Waffly.
Fuck you. Waffly. I hope whatever game you guys are playing right now, that you guys are having a really rough time.
Damn. All of them? Not just Millsy? But that, that's a little. Oh, it's Millsy and Potato Man.
Yeah, cause they're just spamming my chat with, with, uh, with throwing waffles at my face. God damn it. Koinu, you're supposed to be on my team.
See, mine is broken, so nobody can throw anything at me. I'm shaved. What? That sounds like a threat.
Wow, this song is very calming.
Yeah, makes me wanna sleep.
Okay, that's fair starch. You know what?
What do I do? I have to think. I don't like thinking.
Tell me something I don't know.
Okay, buddy. Whatever.
I tried to, I tried to stop myself from saying it. But I really wanted to.
You try for a whole five seconds.
It's a very long five seconds. I said, I hope your games go really badly. Call me a rat again, I'm gonna. Uh, do something about it. You know what? That's crazy.
What do you do? Time yourself out?
No, I timed it now.
It'll be really funny if he realizes this is shared chat and he just comes to flame you in my chat.
Don't give him ideas.
Now that will be. Wait, so does everyone see the icons or is, is that just us?
Uh, like, just.
The chat icons, yeah.
No, everybody sees them, I'm pretty sure.
Really? Cuz I think I went to somebody else's chat that we were doing like a stream together thing and I don't think I remember seeing icons. The hotel room rotates. What? Are you drunk? Maybe the hotel room? Why would it rotate? Is, is the hotel room playing Valorant? Why would it rotate? What do you mean?
What are you talking about?
Yuina said the hotel room rotates, Leah. What does that mean?
What hotel room? Why is it rotating?
It moves so we can see the, wait, what? You're, you're, what? It moves? Yuina said it's actually, it actually moves so we can see the whole park.
Oh, Times Mountain boat chat.
Oh shit. I didn't read, there was a big block of text about moderation for shared chats. Wait, that's so cool though. You can get a hotel room that moves?
Wait, but where? What's happening?
I, I don't know, Yuina said there's a hotel room involved and there's a park. And the hotel room moves so you can see the whole thing. Like, are you in a ball? Like, you're in a glass ball? Epic universe.
Epic universe, alright, let's kind of, it's Google tag.
Alright. First distraction. How long did we make it? Thirty minutes. No, that's kinda lame.
No, it's pretty good for us.
Oh wait, I don't even have the right mic.
Oh, it's pretty. You Google, Google it.
Googly.
Like a, yeah, it's like a fantasy theme park type.
Oh, actually, you know what? No, I'm not gonna put it cuz I forgot we have TV on. Let me see. Epic universe. She said fireball in your chat and IQD in mine?
Hi baby girl.
Why? What do you mean? I'm trying to, don't listen.
You're so annoying, man.
Why, leave me alone, man. What's good, my G? This is so funny. Oh man, wait, so where's the hotel?
He's being man-umi in my chat. Dark Blast.
Dark Blast. Now I get the spells. Rock. I told him about it. I told him about the rock spell earlier. Oh man.
Do you like that spell because it's easy to say, we?
Bro, I'm telling you, she cast rock like seventeen times and then Cal was trying so hard to talk to her. She was just like, rock.
It's fucking insane.
This, uh, this theme park looks crazy though. It looks like a video game. Can we go there? Is it like, is it gonna cost me like rent to get there?
Yeah. I mean, you gotta fly there.
Wait, no, it's not that bad. A, a day? No, no, okay, I'm talking about, you know, hypothetically, if I was already there. Oh, it's in Florida. No, no, that's actually, it's crazy. All I hear about Florida is insane. Isn't that the place where, where like GTA took most of their riff?
It's where the Florida meme comes, Flor- Florida man memes come from.
There's, it, this, this website says, there's so many different prices. For one day, it's one fifty-eight euro. For two days, it's two fifty-five.
Oh, that's not bad at all.
Right? Like, it looks, it looks like a super expensive thing. I, I was expecting like a lot more.
There's a straight up fa- like medieval fantasy themed like resort?
Oh, that sounds nice.
Well, where it was, yeah, sometimes they hold like big events too, where it's like kind of larp-y, where you can like dress up.
Yeah, that would be fun. I wanna go to a Nintendo theme park too.
Is that the theme park where you go to get sued by Nintendo?
Damn, I mean, I'm not making it. I'm not making Pal World, so I'm fine. No, you know, I don't agree with a lot of their more recent decisions even. I, I don't know if I disagree with the, with the, the suing Pal World, but I definitely think, you know. I don't know. Kind of on the fence about it. It was on one and I'm like, okay, but everybody said it looked like Pokemon when Pal World was released.
Listen, and I think, I think anybody who s- says that it doesn't look like Pokemon is smoking, smoking something cuz it does. There's no, there's no, there's no argument about that. I think you have to be extremely delusional or just, I don't know. Like you never heard of Pokemon ever before.
Right.
So I think, I think Pal World was really toeing the line there. I think they were playing with fire and, you know. But that's not the reason why, it's like.
Same thing, too close to the sun, whatever. What is it? Flu?
Yeah, that guy.
You can stay at my place in Osaka, can go to Nintendo World there. Say less, I'm going there right now.
She's like getting on a plane right now.
On the plane? Nah, I'm pouring, man, I'm walking.
Across the ocean?
Yeah. I think I'm almost done with.
Guys, I think Leah might be a little delusional.
Damn, who is she? You sound like a good friend and she sound funny and. Don't worry, I'll get back to you. I have more, more things to say. Right now, I ran out of things to say. Do I eat pizza? Do I wait? I'm kinda hungry.
This is pretty good. Oh boy.
Epi boy.
I'm a little, I've been, I mean, I've been tired for a couple hours now, so I guess I'm not too, not too surprised.
So relaxing.
Makes me more asleep. This guy. I think they look like assassins enough. Well, apparently there's a, um, Renaissance festival.
A what?
Renaissance festival here at the end of September. But I, I would have to, like, it's not close enough for me to like not stay at a hotel. So I'm debating if I wanna go.
With me?
You're not here.
Okay.
Because otherwise, yes, that would be really fun. But. You know?
You know what my last rent fair experience is? I got a urinary infection.
So you're scared of urinal?
It hurt, man. Oh my. They have arrived. Okay, I'm fine. You know what it was? It was, it's actually, it was horrible, dude. I, so I was wearing like a full, like, super heavy medieval dress. And then we were walking a lot and it's like, they themed the village to be, to be, you know, medieval, like re- renaissance themed. And, um, the village is like super bumpy, right? It's like, it's, the terrain is, is like. You know, like all over the place. And so we did a lot of walking cuz we were like hanging out the entire day and just walking around and like checking everything. And, um, we went back to my friend's house, who just happens to be the biggest. What was it? He lives a- above like the, the, the biggest bank in France. It's like those super rich people. Uh, bank, yeah, no, that shit was crazy. That shit was like a castle. I, I got lost. I tried to find the toilet twice and I got lost. And so. So fucking big, dude. And then, um. The problem was because we got home so late and we were like, you know, kinda like cooling down and stuff. I, we didn't, we didn't shower when we got home. We were planning on showering before leaving the next day, like next morning. Um, and I guess, I don't know what happened. I don't know if we had to just, I don't know why we left in a hurry. I don't remember. But no, none of us had time to shower. So we're sweating our fucking asses off, drinking a lot of like meat and whatnot. I'm wearing a, I'm wearing a crazy like heavy costume. Uh, the others weren't, uh, not all of them in, in, anyway. And, and we're sweating for two whole days, drinking a lot of alcohol and stuff and, um. Well, obviously, what happened? I got home on Monday. We, I, I got to shower on Sunday night. I was delighted, but I got home on Monday and I'm like. I go, I go to my fucking bathroom and I'm like. It burns.
Why my pee hurts?
Um, this does not feel right. And, and yeah, so what happened? Is this shit is gonna be TMA, you better mute me if you don't wanna hear this. Is I got, I got an infection. I got a, like a triple infection. So it was a ur-. Bro, that shit was fucking terrible. It, I got a urinary infection, so just the shit when your pee burns, but then I guess. I don't know why or what caused it, but I got like multiple, almost, almost like, like mini stab wounds all, all over my coat.
I don't mean to laugh, but it's.
It was so bad. Dude, and so that's why, so apparently, cuz I'd kinda just assumed the urinary infection was, was caused like, the, like peeing to be so painful. But it, it was the multiple wounds cuz I was peeing on them. It was so fucking bad. And the worst part is, the, my, my, my doctor almost refused to treat me. Because she assumed that this was caused by, by, by sex and I was a virgin at the time. And, and she, she refused to believe me. She said that there was no way I could get something this bad without doing the do. And I was like, no, like I, I, I know what I did, man, like. And yeah, and so she did not wanna give me the fucking medication. I was just, I crab walked, bro. Oh my god, I crab walked my way to the doctor cuz I couldn't drive. My brother couldn't drive. And so, and the, the doctor was like down, down the street. But it was like a hill going down. And the problem is, it got so bad on Monday, I could not walk. It hurt to walk. Any, any type of movement that involved my legs was just like, like immensely pain- painful. And I'm pretty tolerant to pain. But this shit was, was like awful. And so I had to crab walk, like I'm talking like. You know that little gremlin models that have like super, super spread out legs? That was, that, that was me. The entire street. And I got there and she doesn't fucking believe me. Almost sent me home without medication. And, uh, yeah, no. It was, it was, it was horrible, man.
It's just crazy to me that she didn't believe you.
Yeah, no, she was an asshole. You know what it is? Because I kept getting sick. It was when I was in the game art school. And I kept getting sick. And, uh, I, she thought that I was making it up. So she didn't wanna, yeah, she thought I was making it up cuz I was asked, I told her, uh, my, my school kept asking for like papers. To prove that I was sick and that I was, you know, allowed to take the time off and not go to school. And then I guess she just refused to make the papers, so I had to like, you know, find like workarounds or just like lie to my school because they wouldn't, they wanted me to give a paper. And then, and then she just started not fucking treating me. She a fucking bully, dude. She still took the money though. There's no problem with that.
Of course she did, of course she did. Insane.
Yeah. Question asked by many folk in the olden way. Why do like pee hurt? Trust me, this didn't happen for reasons that funny. Yeah, I wish, man. I fucking wish, dude. I was just drinking and I didn't get to shower on the first day after. Yeah, I wish, man. I fucking wish, dude. I was just drinking, and I didn't get to shower on the first day after sweating, and that's what happened.
Oh yeah. Yeah, I would've been like, yeah, I wish it was from being, it was from getting laid, but unfortunately.
Yep.
I still didn't get bitches, I got this instead.
No, I got a bitch, I, my ex was a bitch, but that's unrelated. Sorry. No. Oh man. Yeah. What's your most pain, like painful experience, physically?
You do not wanna hear about it, man, it is gruesome.
You lose a leg or some shit?
Not really?
Not really?
Yeah, not really?
What?
Okay, for, for real though, like, anybody in chat who is a little squeamish, like, maybe, just like, you know, go away for like, five minutes?
Okay.
I'm gonna tell the story.
Make, like draw a little, a, a little smiley face when you're done, so they know.
Yeah, I'll draw a little, I'll draw a little smiley face when, when, when we're done. Um. So my first time in Canada visiting. Um, I was with uh, my cousins who uh, got these new bikes, and it was all very excited. And uh, I was, I think I was like, six at the time? And these are bikes that have like, the little seat in the back, well, they're not seats, but you know, kids will use them as seats. You know? Hey Kells, um, you just came in, but I'm telling a, a possibly squeamish story, so.
Thank you for the follow.
Go away for a little bit, if you don't wanna hear it, uh, I'll draw a smiley face. When I'm done. But uh, yeah, so, so I, my cousin was like, hey, you wanna go for a ride? And I was like, yeah, for sure, you know, let's go, let's go get some can, let's go get some candy, you know what I mean? I was all excited, and I hopped on, and halfway through, and I was wearing sandals. And halfway through the ride, I was like, oh, something really hurts my fucking foot. And it took me a second to realize that, wow, this actually really fucking hurts. And it was because my foot had been caught between the bars and the wheel of the back wheel. Still pedaling, and so. I still have scars from it, because um, I'm missing like, a bit of flesh from like, my. Because it was, you know.
Oh my god!
It hurt real bad. It hurt real bad.
Oh my god! Uh, well, I mean, good for you, you didn't lose a whole foot, cuz, cuz that could've been a reason. Oh my god.
That's what I mean by like, I didn't lose a foot, I didn't lose a leg, but you know?
Oh my, oh, ew, ah. Ew, yeah, that's terrible, oh my god.
It's uh, it's not the best.
I get it though, cuz the same thing happened to me. Granted, that was in my mouth, but. You know? Yeah, I, I thought it was normal, cuz I was so used, it was when I had braces, and I was so used to ha- just. Everything being painful in my, in my mouth at that point in my life, that I was like, this is probably normal, and turns out it was not normal, and the thing that was um. What was it like, spreading out my, my, like, the roof of my, of my mouth?
Irritator, yeah.
Yeah, it, it went inside. It went in the flesh. And I thought it was normal, I thought the pain was normal, cuz all I could feel in my fucking mouth was pain anyway. And uh, yeah, it wasn't.
So, if you guys don't know yet, if it hurts a lot, it probably isn't supposed to.
Well, unless they tell you. But I mean, even if they told me dude, I would've thought this, this was still normal, honestly, I don't think I would've done anything about it.
Yeah, I think, because I think a lot of people like. And I think doctors are getting better about it nowadays, is, uh, listening to people when, when they say like, you know, they're.
Yeah, it hurts, yeah.
Yeah, cuz, cuz I, I think back in the day, it was always like, yeah, it's supposed to be that way, you just gotta suck it out for a little bit, right? But then it, it, it causes some issues, like, you know, instances where tools are being left inside the person after surgery.
Yeah. Permanently broken thumb? What happened to you?
What the fuck, how is it permanently broken? Can't you just like, duct tape it? My bad.
That's your friend? I broke it when I was like. Oh my god! You need that thumb for things and stuff? Yeah, he got me convinced with that one. Okay.
What, that you need your thumbs for things and stuff?
Yay. Don't you?
Yes, but I, I would, I would hope that you knew that beforehand.
He said hand. We're talking about thumbs. It's funny, man, I'm, I'm, I'm super funny, I just want you to know. What's your favorite memory? Like, between, between the two of us? I need to be real short, I know. I don't know what mine is.
Your memory is, is the fact that you forgot me like, four times.
Oh damn, oh, whoa, yay. It's not even four, like, why does it keep going up?
It feels like four sometimes. I'm sorry, Kells, I hope, I hope you, I hope you can like, you know, figure out a way to like, manage the pain, cuz I, I can only imagine how much that hurts.
Oh my god. Wait, there has to be. I mean, even if you get surgery. Like the pain, do you think the pain is gonna linger like, afterwards? Surely the point of getting surgery is that, you know, it doesn't hurt afterwards.
Yeah, but the thing is, you have to, uh, like, uh, also considering that Kells is in the U- United States.
Oh, I'm sorry for your loss.
Yeah.
Man, sometimes I see people like, posting their hospital bills. Again, no, that shit's crazy dude. Could buy like, three houses a year. The craziest part is when, when it's, it's uh, mothers that post like, hospital bills after giving birth.
Oh yeah.
This is insane, like. I don't, I just don't get it. I don't think I'll ever get it.
I don't think it's something that's like, reasonable, but you know?
Right, like, damn.
I suppose, but it's like. But you know, we got a lot of um, illegal immigration from the States here, be, for like childbirth.
Hmm, why?
Because it costs nothing.
Oh, right, I forgot you're, yeah, I forgot you're not in the States, I was like, huh? Thank you for the learn.
I used to work, I used to work with a guy that did that, with his wife.
He gave birth?
Uh, they, they came here on vacation and gave birth.
Oh, they knew? Like, was it planned?
Yeah, they did it with, uh, they did it on purpose.
Oh.
Because, I mean, like. You know?
Yeah, no, I get it.
Like, I don't think you get covered, but it is still significantly cheaper. I think anybody get it, gets it here either, but the lead in the walls of the pipes for generations does great at preventing people from thinking about it too deeply. Yep. That's always the case.
It's crazy, man.
Yeah, I saw like, a thing, um, recently about like, oh, like. Like, why would you, like. Why would you wanna like. Spend all this money just so other people get healthcare? I'm like, well, I'm spending all this, you know, people are taking my tax, tax dollar money regardless, I'd rather go it. For it to go to people who actually need it than like.
Well, yeah.
Stuff like, you know, oh, um. More nukes? You know? Like, at least I can get behind like, helping people, you know, get surgeries they need.
Yeah.
People get, you know, mental health care. Stuff like that. Yeah, we just chilling.
Damn, man, come on!
A full eight stacks of the UTI debuff.
You damn motherfuckers imply the fucking dot damage on me.
It's like, it's like taking, it's like taking uh, AOE damage of Final Fantasy fourteen and getting like, the vulnerability stats.
God, bro. I got everything ulted. It's so, it was so bad, man, I was so fucked, oh. The pain is just, you know what, I got one more for you, I got one more fact. The, like, peeing was so, so painful that I had a pain towel in my, in my bathroom, that I had to bite on. Otherwise, I couldn't pee. That shit was drenched with drool, cuz I had, I had to pee, I had to pee to heal. But it, it hurt so bad that I had to bite on something to pee, otherwise it, I just, it just wouldn't go.
Yeah, that's rough, man.
Yeah, I was terrible. Oh. The river, it's not the mirror. You know, I guess it makes more sense.
Oh, this roller skate, isn't it?
Yay. The game that I've played how many times and never finished.
Cuz you just kept getting everybody killed.
Um, actually. It was only a village. I tried my best, man.
Well, because you thought too much about it.
Whatever, whatever.
Just relax and, you know?
You're lame.
What do you get for hating on my girl Shadowheart?
She lame too, the lamest. Always a weirdo, oh, ah! Excuse me?
He's such a normie, man.
Who will? I guess he is. Oh, you're talking about, you know, you're talking about BG three Will? Not my Will?
Yeah.
Wait, no, Will is the black dude, isn't he?
Yeah, he is.
No, I, I like the wizard.
Okay, oh, he's also a huge normie.
Whatever. A you a hater.
He's a weeb too.
Perfect for me.
He's, he's like the guy that would have Yu-Gi-Oh cards in his back, uh, in his backpack, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Which friend was that? The enemy's friend that have the Yu-Gi-Oh cards in his back?
Why they catching us, right?
Cuz I just think it's really funny. That's why he would, he would play Magic the Gathering, my bad, my bad.
Oh. I can't even flame, man, now we have too many friends that, that play Magic the Gathering.
It's not a bad thing, it's just very nerdy.
Yeah, my brother used to play, and he tried to teach me, but I'll be honest, I was just, I was a fucking stupid kid, so I was just kinda staring at the cards and be like, ooh. Trees.
Not even, not even, ooh. Ooh, trees. This bitch, I swear to god, man. Insanity.
Hey, tell, did I ever tell you that my brother, um, used to uh, paint uh, figurines? And I would always watch him, cuz I thought it was super interesting. Uh, and I, you know, cuz I was a little, little kid, me, I was like, can I, can I help? I wanna paint with you. And he was like, no, not really, cuz I, I can't afford to buy new figurines if you fuck it up, which I understand, you know? In retrospect, I understand, but he wanted to include me so bad that he let me do the base coat, so I, I got to paint the white coat. And I was like, hey, 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 I'm painting. He was so right to not let me do more though. Are you getting good progress? I'm getting good progress.
Yeah, I'm working on that night that I told you I was having issues with.
Oh.
You know?
Big tower shield, dude. Yay! Why can't we do that when we're just in a call?
We can.
No, bro, we never, don't lie to me!
What, what do you think?
What did you say? What is, okay, what did you say? Oh, it's crazy that you say that, cuz I was about to ask you if you wanna play Valorant.
Uh huh, and, we still finish stuff, and then we play Valorant.
But I'm the Lulu. I'm just saying.
Just hates everything.
I feel like, we've been really good, and, okay, whatever, shit! I wanna speak no more. Yeah. I'm glad you think so.
I do.
Great.
I want, it would be really funny if, we get into a like, an argument like this, and battle music just starts happening.
I don't think this, this playlist has battle music. It's ambient. Do you want battle music?
No, 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 no. Damn.
That's kinda battle music. Yeah, that's the Hobbit. That's the Misty Mountains. I love these movies, man.
Have you tried reading the books?
What do you think?
Okay, well, I just wanted to ask.
What do you think?
My bad for assuming that you could read it. my bad for assuming that you could read
exactly no um you know what's what's funny I've I've um my we have like specialties uh in school in high school so you have to pick like what uh what you wanna specialize in after a certain grade and um my specialty was literature I did I think I I could count on a single hand the amount of books I've read in my life
no buddy
I'm a fucking fraud dude cuz I was like like top of the class for most of the like uh literature related stuff to you I just read like I just read like short versions on on uh Wikipedia and I just winged it
write your book report on that
if they had like usually if they had like movie version I would read on Wiki and then I would watch the movie then I would just go off that and that always worked
yeah I mean
hey work smart right
I think a lot of like reading reading comprehension this isn't necessarily about like having read the whole thing anyway it's about understanding what it it was about in the first place
yeah yeah I couldn't it I spent I don't know I don't know what it was but it for me it just took too long to read
wanted to do um like audiobooks recently so I can like listen and you know
yeah
I thought like and I was wondering like if it would be the same cuz um I want to improve like writing and all that stuff again used to write all the time and then I stopped and then now whenever I try to write I'm like this is poopy
I feel that I wrote some fantasy story that I I stuck with for a very long time actually and this is this is kinda lore this is deep lore cuz my brother um made fun of me for the way I phrased a lot of things cuz it was it was a little childish you know I'll give you that was a little childish and he was like um um he was making fun of like how I was describing there were like elves in a forest involved and he was making fun of how I was describing the forest cuz I guess it was very it was very it was kinda baby
okay I mean you were starting out I guess
yeah but no I stopped I was like whatever I don't need these ails I don't need nothing I don't even like I don't even like writing anyway I got I just got demotivated it wasn't really him that made me stop but I just think it's it's hilarious cuz every time I mention I mentioned this story he's just like oh yeah the the bush forest
I used to wanna be an author when I grew up
me too
in my in my silly Gundam fanfiction that's crazy though um my sister's best friend uh and she she was I I worked with her in my last job um as well uh we got her into anime and that got her into writing fanfiction and now she's a published author
oh shit oh that's that's cool
I thought it was really neat it's like butterfly effect you know what I mean
yeah I worked extra hard to make to try and get my brothers not even approval but like he was he always made it very hard for me to get a compliment about anything I made like he made he he made it I don't know he I guess he wanted me to work for it cuz he knew how I worked and he he knew I I am a very much um I am a being that is fueled by spite if you challenge me to do something it's very likely I'll do it I might say no but I'll do it and um I think he caught he caught that and so he kept every time I would get invested into something I'd start liking something he would just not give me a fucking compliment and so I just kept working for it I was so happy man the first day he told me that my art looked good cuz he's he's not mean about it right it's like he will not say it looks like shit he will just be like okay that's it the first day like he actually complimented my stuff and I think it was um well no I wasn't around but like in more recent times I guess um it was when he's when I started taking commissions and I started showing him my work and he was like oh so you kinda made it I this looks nice and I'm like what did you say I didn't record
you gotta say it again I gotta record this
it works you know he knows me I ain't shit
and my uh my parents are very typically Asian parents so there's not a lot of compliments to go around ever
I just I just told Will that I gave him coins back he just got out of the shower I just I just told him I gave him uh coins back cuz he the 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 command was worked and he just walked to his office oh babyish time are you Epi I fucking lost oh my god
everybody have need to have intervention for Will
I think we need a emote for Will you know the people leave like the angry people that just turns around and walks away this is him was I gonna say uh do you wanna end soon you Epi
how long have we it's only been an hour now I'm good unless you wanna sleep
an hour into no I'm good you drawing me
you're really skinny and stuff
oh hell yeah say it again
nevermind
that's fine one day I will be and then I'll say it to myself matter of fact I'm gonna call my mama I'm gonna tell her to say it you're probably gonna be like nope hang up on me you'll be the type to do that my mom is ruthless man you probably love you probably love her she always she always mess with me dude
I think we would terrorize you
huh you would
I said I said I think we would terrorize you
oh yeah what what was that oh it's Sen I heard I forgot I had sound alerts I just hear hello motherfucker oh my god damn I kinda said that on point we're working this is my bestie oh this is one of the the people that I told you I think you'd like
who's that
Sen
hi Sen you tell you told them that they would like me or you told me I would like them
yeah I just told you this is this is my bestie Hika we are working together because we love to be productive what am I drawing am I drawing on the wrong layer oh my god
he has layers like
like bitches that's what that's what you're gonna say yeah 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 why are we laughing why my Papa's I better be I better be poppy at least well you don't want me to be poppy
not really
you know it's hilarious when you you're not like audibly laughing but I can still hear it I would ask you Papa's is you doesn't that mean potatoes no I think Papa's means potatoes too I think it's both isn't it
I think you're a Papa's
whatever so starches Papa's yeah yeah your head hurt me too that's good right
so starches Papa's yeah I guess so
simple Papa's hi AV we have a sleepy old man I would say I didn't mean it but I kinda did so
yeah I know you did so apology not accepted
everybody Epi why are you guys Epi isn't it morning for most of you it could be potatoes and daddy depending on how you say it oh you're daddy what do you mean ew
makes me feel a little weird
oh really
it's okay I know it's a compliment yeah it was cuz
are you kicking your feet
no I'm just thinking about like if I if I should tell this story but
are we gonna get banned
no 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 it's it's just because I I had a stalker for a little bit
oh my god
that would call me daddy
it's eight PM alright I forgot it's twelve it's twelve thirty wait where are you
he oh PST uh it's twelve thirty for me as well
you're only three hours of what two three am I not reading this right oh PM is noon
yeah yeah not not morning morning is eight twelve twelve AM
wait you're always oh no nevermind I was gonna say you're always Epi around this time but you wake up at around this time
I just uh my my soup schedule's a little fucked recently that's why over the plague those freaks for a while after the convention and then you know that's my dad right there
your dad
yeah my rig is uh done by Ninja Josh
wow hi dad
hi dad father
can you can you me too I'm also a father I am Millsy's father oh what oh it's bled wait
you're bleeding
no the color bleed most fucking random what huh
he's supposed to be small
I'm not I'm not small though I'm a tall
damn man
I just wanna let you know I'm not even small I'm like really tall and shit and muscular
oh I'm very high up one second
hi Asulina am I taller than Dante isn't Dante small probably not
wait like in real life
I yeah I think I think I I have a vague a vague memory of I don't know actually if it's him wait is he six two
tall man the fuck
that's like a fucking tree bro what are we talking
get outta here with that no tall's allowed
he oh shit yeah no definitely not you know what actually no I'm taller right he could back me up
hey you're like seven feet tall
yeah 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 yeah
thank you Asulina yeah it's a long time ago so it's you know over and done with
you know if it was happening right now I'd be I'd beat his ass she
yeah my stalker yeah
oh I beat her ass too
you better beat her ass too because we ain't we ain't sexist in here
oh yeah nope equality and shit
do the tals have the majority in chat I don't know chat how tall are you guys
Y'all wanna stage a coup? That's crazy. You know, I used to pronounce, no, it's crazy, this is a French word too, but I used to pronounce it coupe, like the chicken chick. Yeah, cuz I thought that's how you guys would say it.
Y'all literally invented the word.
Whatever. Hey man, you're being asshole. There is no such thing as whatever, you're like, don't hit women.
What?
Sen said equality and shit is crazy. And I'm saying, you know, you know what? I saw this tweet about, um, um, a guy was a guy was, uh, protecting his wife that got beaten up by like twelve girls. So, so he fought back, right? He like, he punched, he punched these women and, and people in the com- like, I guess the person was asking. Uh, what would you do and do you think the man is wrong? And everybody in the comments is like, hey man, they swung up my wife, now there's no now, now, it's, there's equality. I'm gonna swing back. It's so cute, dude. The, the, the comments were really funny.
Also, thank you for the follow. Appreciate you.
Still need to know the height designation for tall people, majority. Wait. What, what, how tall is everybody then? No, you know what? If you don't wanna say how tall you are, what's, what's the average? How many of you are like taller than like five, five?
Five, six, five, seven?
Yeah, five, six, sure. Yeah, you sound like a tall, I was gonna say tall bitch, I didn't say it. You sound like a tall man, 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 man. Whatever, they don't exist. I don't see them, so they don't exist. Can't see their head. Actually, like in the clouds. Everybody in chat is taller than five, six.
Me too, me too, me too.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
I actually am, but.
Yeah, me too.
Don't clear your throat after you say that, it sounds.
Yeah, well, it's my fault, I need to clear my throat, like.
Cause you lying?
No. No. My mama said, small is cute. Yo, yeah. He's a dragonborn. Do you know I covered this?
You did?
Yeah, it's a, it's an old video. It's like when I used to do face cam covers.
Should do it again.
I'm fat, bro. Oh.
You know, a puntable is not as expensive, but if, if only you could see my face right now. Insane, man.
I'm not even that short. Am I like very short?
You?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess like not really.
I'm like, like, like a centimeter taller than Umi. Like, I mean a centimeter, like, it's ridiculous.
I know.
Okay. Why? Did she tell you?
I know your height and I know Umi's height, so.
Oh.
And Jess, I don't know what to tell you, my, my eyes are a dot. He said, said stop drawing with your eyes closed. I can't help.
Oh.
No, it's hard because of the angle. Um, I, I'm using a webcam, uh, right now, cuz I lost a charger to my iPhone. So I can't use it right now.
What a silly man.
Bro, I've been streaming like a year.
What?
I said, I haven't streamed in like a.
Oh, yeah, I thought that was, I thought you were dissing me. I was like, you haven't streamed in like a year, and I'm like, what I do?
Yeah, that and also I am leaning down cuz I have to look down to, at my tablet.
Yeah, I put my cam on, on top of my tablet so that unless I'm really focused and I'm like actually tilting my head down. Still has my, it, it looks like I look down, but I'm not closing my eyes. But it's because I.
Either of my models have, um, a very clear like look down, um, angle, so.
Yeah, thank you for the follow Ninja.
Let's go.
So, so technically, you are my uncle. I just made you my brother. I'm glad you didn't say anything. You know what? I'll take the silence as a yes.
I'm really confused. I'm so confused right now.
Ninja is now my uncle, which makes you my brother.
Oh, okay.
Maybe now I, I just make a model for you and then you have two dads. I guess we're Spanish now too.
Hermanos.
If I'm Hika's dad and I'm your uncle, that means you're cousins. Does it?
Yeah, that means we're cousins.
Oh. This is hard.
I think we're both a little tired, you think, you know, right?
No, I'm fine. Locked in. If I was your dad, then you'd be brothers. Oh yeah, I'm dumb. This is so simple, wait.
Chat, I think.
Oh well.
Oh, well.
Just another day.
A real educational Saturday.
You know what? On the topic of saying stupid shit, I don't know why for the longest time, what was it? I always saw, I always thought that. Oh, I got it wrong again. Nope, I'm not saying. There's a town, there's a town that I always thought was in, in, in Italy that just was like in France.
Which one?
I don't, I, no, I wanna say, I don't remember which one.
Come on.
No, 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 no.
Come on. You can't start telling us the story without finishing.
Let me, let me look it up cuz maybe I have it backwards.
Thank you Sen for the, for the, for the follow, appreciate it.
Venice. I thought that was in France.
She's shy now, that's, yup.
Yeah. I don't know why.
I guess you do get shy.
Huh? Me? No.
Okay.
Whatever.
Venice is in, um.
It's Italy.
Yeah, I was thinking of, uh. I was thinking of Vienna. It's like, no, that's, that's Austria.
Oh, you know, I probably thought that was in France too. Or whatever other wrong country. I don't fucking know. Out of respect, I won't call you poppy. Sausage.
Making sausages in Peru.
Wait, Hika, hear me out. What if? Are you done with your line art?
Almost.
Okay, what if we, we try one game of a sent five peak after and then we end? We, we all know that shit's gonna last like twenty minutes anyways, so.
You have no faith.
Uh, why would I, man? It's just so hard.
Have you gotten, have you beaten it yet? You have, right?
No, not five, it's two, it's terrible.
Why am I having trouble with this right now? What the fuck is going on?
The what?
I'm trying to draw the the grieves. The grieves on this guy, I can't seem to get the shape right. Let's get this out of here. I love Vienna sausages.
What is that?
Vienna sausages? They're like a type of sausage. Saucic.
Saucic. Let me Google. Oh. They look like some. Yeah, no, but we have the equivalent, but I don't, I didn't know they, they called them that.
Think like Vienna sausages have like a specific spice to them? Maybe in North America, we just call those like Vienna sausages, like just generically, cuz North America.
Oh my god, that scared the fucking shit out of me. Somebody tried on my stream and I jumped, I fucking jumped. Why is it so loud?
Wake up!
My god.
Surprised at the lack of gambling on your stream.
No, don't tell them. Okay, you're gonna wake them up, stop.
Like the bat signal.
Oh my god.
Gambler, 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 gambler.
There, you can gamble your points away. I think you missed him, but Will, oh my fucking god. I don't think you were here, Sen, but, um, Will pulls up in stream and then gamble, gambles all his points away. And then if he loses, he just leaves. That's, that's the little ritual. Oh, there we go.
Sorry, guys, I baited you.
I don't think anybody's won so far, gambling.
Let me try. Let's go!
Wait, why'd you have? Wait. Oh, Sen lost, I thought that was you.
No.
Never mind, I got quiet cuz I felt bad, but that's fine. If you win a second time, that's disrespectful. I just wanna let you know.
My god!
Talking Kakao, are we? Now I know why the fucking, the word Kakao is so funny. For what, like?
Wait, if I won six thousand fluffy point, uh, fluffy coins, why do I only have eight thousand nine hundred seventy-four?
You gambled? Oh, I think you can only gamble up to three thousand if I'm not mistaken.
Damn, alright. I won three times today, I'm good. I don't wanna, I don't wanna risk it no more.
That's crazy.
Cash it out. I'm leaving, I'm cashing out.
That's crazy. In front of my salad.
In front of my salad? In front of my boy Jesus?
Damn, said that, they sound really funny.
I did, I did, I did. I came up with it.
Guys, one day.
You guys don't understand, for the last like I don't know how many streams I've watched of Lea's, I've only ever lost. So I'm running away from, with all this money right now.
Wait, really?
I'm running. Yeah.
Oh.
Suck we had to, suck we had to give me some, some extra coin.
Oh yeah, you were poor, I, I remember. Our boy Jesus.
Jesus. Reminds me of that video, why are you breaking up with me? I have found Jesus.
The what?
You just seen that?
No.
It's like this guy and like, he's like getting broken up with. He's like, why, why do you wanna break up with me? And she's like, I, I found Jesus. Fucking bucket. At another guy. He's like, Jesus! Yeah, it's good. Hey Tempted, what's up? Thanks for saying hi. Hope you've been well. Sleep, sleep good. Is your name Jesus? Because if it is, I, I did.
Wait, is your name actually Jesus?
If your name is actually Jesus, I'm gonna need.
Oh yeah, that's cool too. You're like a Pokemon trainer. Sorry, I have the references of like a, a six year old. I'm sorry.
At least she didn't, at least she didn't say like, like a SpongeBob meme.
Oh, what's wrong with my boy SpongeBob, man?
They're saying, that's like, it's either Pokemon or SpongeBob with you.
See, that's crazy that you say that cuz I could whip out a recording of you singing to SpongeBob. See, that's crazy that you say that cuz I could whip out a recording of you singing the SpongeBob opening right now.
Oh, boy, let's not do that.
I was so confused too, I was like, why are you screaming? Then I'm like, oh. Guys, in case you don't know, I bugged Hika to um to to sing with me. And 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 then his response was to send me a recorded audio of him singing the SpongeBob opening song.
I remember you, you were like, why is it only eighteen seconds? And I didn't have a response to that cuz I was like, I don't.
Why is it?
The part you wanted me to sing was eighteen seconds, oh, it's okay. Cuz I always told her, I always told her that we should cover the SpongeBob thing cuz cuz she she'd love SpongeBob.
No, I'm very normal about SpongeBob, actually.
Every single time SpongeBob in the background.
No, I stopped, it's been a while cuz they removed it from Netflix, I think.
Okay, but you didn't stop like because you wanted to. Who who lives on pineapple under this e? I don't remember the rest of the song, I had to look it up when I sang it.
I know it in French, unfortunately.
How dare you?
Oh, sorry, I guess, shit. Can you get the French rendition? Can I find it on Spotify, wait?
It'd be really funny, good. Oh man, it would have been so funny if I found it in French and sang it in French instead.
It's great, I would have been so happy, I just wanna let you know. I would have been very happy, I don't think I could find it on Spotify, uh. Daily motion. He he found the lyrics. Okay, wait, I think that's it, hold on. Can you hear that?
No, it didn't change for me.
Oh, wait, I have my game. Hold on. And then. Needs to go to this, I think. Oh, Jesus Christ, oh god, oh hell no.
What just happened?
My audio like tripled.
Oh no.
Why did it do that? Oh, let me, let me put it very. Why didn't it triple? What? Hold on.
Can't believe Leah just deafened chat. Sorry, guys.
What? I don't get it. Nor understand, what if I just do default? Is it gonna do that anyways? Can you hear that?
Uh, I don't have your stream.
No, they can't, wait, why is it not coming through if I do this?
Alright, you have like.
Oh my god, oh my goodness, oh my lord.
Alright, alright.
No more, no more, no more, no more. You can Google it for yourselves, in fact, this will probably work better. That's so weird. I don't know why it would do that. Why would it triple? Eh, whatever. Nothing happened.
Perfectly normal stream today.
Yep. I just won't join. You done?
I can feel like my hands getting tired.
Oh, now is now is perfect time to play peek then. Huh?
Say I gotta finish this though.
Oh. Oh, I thought you implied that you were done.
Uh, I was gonna, I was saying, um, I can feel my hands getting tired, but I I need to finish uh before I move on.
I see.
You know what? I don't, I don't, I just zoomed out and my brain is like, no. Peak, it's peak time, let's do it.
It's peak, okay.
It's peak time.
Oh my fucking, why would I even have this? Oh, hell no. I had a fucking a horror scream. Oh, my fucking heart.
Someone get you with it?
Oh my lord, I just made, I just made the saddest face, dude. Have you ever played? Oh, never mind, whatever, I don't wanna know. Okay, I think I'm done with this, actually, I think I'm done with the the illustration.
Nice. It's a good time to stop cuz I should be sending this to the client before I finish landing it.
Yeah, I really like the 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 thing that I did with um like setting the the art to white. For rendering, I feel like it made it like a lot easier to place shadows and stuff.
Getting on peak yet?
Yeah, damn. No English. Schnooj.
I just needed, I just needed you, I just need to know that if you, you know, remembered or not.
I have a perfect memory, okay? You take that back, I don't like the attitude in this. Uh, let me just check my model. Loop, loop. Okay. Let me close this, I'm gonna send it later. I'm gonna close this. And gaming. What's my theme song? Gasolina? Uh, it was stuck in my head for so long. Are you hosting or am I hosting?
Uh, it might be better if you host.
Okay, give me a moment. It's my poppers. Peak. Yeah, that's my my waiting screen when I don't have anything, I'm gonna cut the music.
Yeah, yeah, I already closed.
And. That's the big bad demons, oh, my cursor's gone.
Wow.
Oh, no, I'm not playing without a cursor, you got me fucked up. Let me close the game, hold on. Oh, I should switch to peak, huh? Peak.
That would be smart.
Okay, um. Oh. So when the game is loading and there's like aggro crab and whatever logo showing up at first. The screen is black for stream. Oh, oh, wait a minute, that it crashed.
Oh.
That is not, that is unhelpful, actually. What? I think my game is bored, is it Vulcan? It's gotta be Vulcan. Oh, no, we craft again.
I started, I started with a direct uh twelve.
Alright, let's try. That's crazy that my PC can't handle a Vulcan.
It is a little weird.
Hmm, yeah, no, it worked.
Okay.
Oh, okay, invite.
Let's go, alright, I'm gonna mute you in Discord.
Yeah. There's no audio, oh god, there's no game audio. I'm scared. Okay, wait, it's gonna, it's gonna do the reverb stuff. Um. It's doing, why? I don't understand why it's doing that. What if I do this? It's um, it's uh like tripling my audio. I forgot it also does that for. Let me just do this then, uh. Oh, and now I can't hear you. Oh no. Oh, it's gone. J'ai pété mon audio. J'ai pété mon audio. J'ai pitié. Sur stream partout. Wait, Hika, do you hear me? J'ai, j'ai changé, uh. Ah, c'est bon, ça y est, c'est revenu. J'ai, je. Wait, but then. Oh, you forgot I was French? Yeah, I was talking too well cuz I was like, I broke my audio. Um, hang on. Let me re-invite Hika, but then you still don't have sound and I don't understand why. Um. What am I? I'm scared. I'm scared to unmute and then you guys are gonna hear. Yeah, no, it's gonna reverb, why does it reverb? Oh, wait, I think maybe I know, perhaps? I do not know.
Yeah, invite me again.
Oh. Peak. I'm a disabled fishing, so now I, do you hear me? Okay, it's, um. The the audio is poopy. For, um. I don't know what I'm supposed to set it on, for my game, the problem is it. Oh, wait. No. Oh, I think it's this, I need, I do monitor off. Okay, if I do this? Do you guys hear the game now? Okay, I got it, I'm smart, Hika, I'm my own tech support.
Got it.
Yay, alright, it's time to die.
I'm so ready.
I get a pizza, I have a pizza, Will took me.
Oh, I want a pizza.
Will took me to gra- to grab the pizza, no, it's my pizza, it's not your pizza.
No, you're supposed to share.
No, it's my pizza. Alright, you ready? Did you just speak in Discord?
Yeah, it was an accident, I did push to talk. My bad.
Definitely, okay. Hurry up, damn. Hurry up! Damn! Yeah, the bribe worked. It wasn't really a bribe. I just asked and he said yes. Oh, he dead. Goodnight, Hika. Hika, you know what? I forgot that, um... The lantern is really good to warm up, to warm up. Oh damn, which one you want?
Hey, you said the last one.
Oh, alright. Why? We're on a ti- whatever. You want the airline food or you want a sports drink? Yeah! Ooh!
We are?
Got cannon. This is Ascend Five. The night is horrible.
Oh yeah, that's right. I don't need, I don't need anything specific. Let's go.
When you get hungry, you can, oh my god, it's so heavy. Can you, can you carry stuff? Can you carry this and this?
Why, why are we bringing the scalp cannon? Isn't it kinda booty?
Okay, don't, well, you could leave it then. I don't mind, um, I'm, I was assuming, I was assuming it would help in maybe some case scenario. But... We don't have to bring it. It is, it is a little heavy, so. I don't mind if we don't.
I'll, I'll drop it, I'll drop it if we find something.
Okay, I got rope. I want these. I want apple. Apple.
You have a flare in your backpack already, I assume, right?
Yeah, 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 I took the, the spawn one. Eat apple. Eat your veggies.
Oh, thank you. I have one for the road. One for the road.
I almost destroyed everybody's ears. I had the craziest sneeze loaded up.
Yeah, I destroyed everybody's ears.
You may eat my nuts.
The fuck?
I can't have you pass out on me. No, I think I'm a great friend. You, you're never starving, like, you know?
Yeah, Leah fed me her nuts. She didn't even ask. She just kinda did it.
But, okay, but they're colorful.
That is a problem.
No, it's not. Okay. Ah, look at all this lugagi. No, you got balloon on your head. Just you wait until he get a little hungry.
Should put that away, man.
Oh, no, it's ass mushroom. No, no, it's ass.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. You see the, the little, the, I don't know what they're called, the lines under, like the gills or whatever? These mean bad. It needs to be smooth. We only eat smooth.
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 Same, Will, same.
You sick?
Honestly, just laughing too much and my head kinda hurts.
Oh, no, I'm a pretty funny guy.
Alright.
What? Okay, this all looks a little garbage. You could probably go through here. Yeah, or here, I guess. Probably shouldn't have, you know?
Someone say you're a funny guy?
Yeah, I'm the funny guy.
Yeah, says. Yeah, says you're a funny guy.
Do you disagree?
I never said that.
Okay, I'm asking you.
I just don't wanna get a get a big head.
Oh. Already do, I'm afraid. You see the size of my? Uh, it's cold, it's cold, it's cold. I'm cold, it's so cold up here. Ooh. There's a little, there's a little big ledge here. Interesting. Oh, this is perfect. Come here, my friend. Have some nuts.
Do you not need nuts?
I do, but it's okay. Oh, I have airline food, actually.
Caldera, this rotation is actually so crazy.
Is it? Alright, well, that's if we get to the Caldera, cuz...
Which one's Caldera jungle?
Caldera? No, that's, uh, the volcano. That's before the kiln. Where the fuck do we go? This looks crazy, but it also, oh, you know what? Are you a ledge? Or are you a lie? Oh, no, it's kind of a, kind of a ledge, kind of a lie. Oh, you are a lie. Ikaru! Okay, maybe this? Maybe with a piton, this is, this is doable? Maybe after the night, cuz right now my whole soul is cold. Oh, yeah, maybe that's better, actually. Cuz I see, I, I see a clear, like, ledge above this. I think it's about the same height. I don't know if I see a ledge above this.
He can hold me.
Wait, let's go here, cuz I'm gonna, I might pass out. Where's the sun when we needed the most?
I don't know.
Oh, I'm dumb!
Oh. Nice. Don't use too much, we can use it in other maps too. Well, the moon's going down.
Why does it look so slow?
Go faster.
I'm gonna drink a little bit of Pepsi then.
Pepsi.
Where, where is the sun? Still ticking.
I said that. So, why is it still ticking?
Okay, stop now.
I got two pitons.
This one. I think we'll be alright if, if we don't have, like, gold. Let me try.
You think?
Yeah. I might pop a little bit of morale, but... I'm fine.
Alright, so I have piton here.
Yeah, me too. Bro, wait. No, 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 no. Um, uh-oh. No, I'm fine.
Uh-oh, spaghetti-o.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I think this one is the one.
I'm good.
Okay.
That was kind of a hurdle.
Yeah, a little bit. I see something there. I don't know if it's, I think it's a, oh, it's this too.
It's a shop. Oh, nice. Stuck.
I'm getting hungry, though.
Oh, there's so much.
Okay? Wait, which ones are they?
Should be watching?
No, that's good.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Om nom nom. Thank you.
Do you need more?
Yeah. Uh, do you need some? Thank you. Okay, alright, let's go here, actually. This works. Wait, oh god, oh boy, oh whoa. I'm fine.
You good? You good? You alright?
I'm amazing.
I can probably grab you.
Okay, hang on. I think I just, honestly, I just did this super bad, cuz there's a ledge right there, yeah. Yep, this is like, super easy.
There's a cluster from here too, but I don't know if that's good.
Yeah, that's good. So, the cluster frills, when they're bad, they have like a little skirt. You want them?
Sure, if you don't need it.
I'm okay now, yeah.
Oh, they don't, they don't feed me a lot, though.
Yeah, they're a lot better cooked, unfortunately.
That's alright.
A lot of easy jumps between one straight path. Oh, well, if we get there.
We'll get there. Damn.
No, not, not on Ascend Five, man. Oh, let's get some coconut.
Is that possible? I hate these fucking...
Where's the other alco? Oh, there's a luggage here. Oh, gregnogla. You want some?
Uh, do you have, um, do you have morale?
No, zero.
Yeah, you, you, you.
Okay, thank youer. You're gonna have to grab me on this. I'm not, I'm insecure. Thank you.
There's more coconuts if you're hungry.
Uh, I think I'll be alright. I don't really like, coconuts are too heavy.
No, I don't like, I don't like carrying them, but I'll eat them if I'm hungry.
Damn! In front of my salad. Can we alive?
At lunchtime.
Alright.
You have luggage. You get that luggage.
Whoa, sports dwink.
Sports dwink.
Balloon in this green! Babloon. Oh, mushroom.
Can you tell this is, if it's smooth underneath?
Yeah, this is smooth. You can tell on the icon. That would be a little sad. That would be a little sad. You know, you remember that one time I was streaming on Discord and I did that crazy play on the Caldera? Where I was o- about to get roasted. I wish I was on stream, man. That shit was crazy. I still think about it sometimes. No, I don't wanna be cold, I wanna be happy!
I touched the stash.
Energy drink, yeah. What we did. Ooh, noise.
Alright, I'm ready.
Okay. We spend some of the night here?
Yeah.
Oh, you put that on your backpack?
Oh, that's okay.
Oh, okay, it's out. Let's go. Um, I guess left looks alright for the start. I can't really see behind it.
But I think you're right. I think left looks good for the start, then we might have to...
Oh yeah, let's start left and then figure it out then. There's a vine here. Oh. Okay. Oh, another flea. Babna na.
Banana.
Oh, god! Every time I eat, every time I eat banana, I just, I, I slip. It keeps falling under my feet. Oh, there's luggage there. I may pass out very soon.
Why do you keep doing this?
But you wanna, you want some worm?
Good call. It was a little close for me.
Oh.
I'm good now, though.
Okay.
I think it's also there.
Okay.
Oh, there's a luggage pot for the handle. I'll just go to it.
Nuts. You got morale?
Yeah, I do. I also just found a granola bar.
Alright, you get, you get the granola, then I'll eat my nuts.
You can eat your own nuts.
Yeah, my mama told me I gotta be my, my first fan, my biggest fan. I don't think that's what she meant with the nuts, but you know?
Yeah, I don't think so. But, uh, you know what? This is an inside type deal, this.
Oh no, this is... Oh, this is yellow. This is yellow. Um... Why is this ass? It looks so good from the outside. This just seems very tall, no? Let me try it from this side, cuz there's like a little platform.
Got a little food side here, I mean...
Oh my god, this all looks like cheeks. Maybe from here? Wait. Maybe if we manage to like, go here and then up here somehow?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, better yet, that vine! I think the vine is the play here. Yep.
Very nice.
Okay. Hmm, I can, I can, hmm...
Do you think maybe up here, and then trees?
Yeah. This looks pretty ne- if we can make it to the trees, that's the thing. Oh yeah, oh yeah, that's, that's good. Hoi! Okay. Hmm...
I don't know.
What's it?
There's a, there's a fart over there.
Looks like maybe this? No, I don't know, this doesn't go anywhere.
It's like a make-up, I don't think we can reach that.
What about, oh, this is so far. Another tree, maybe?
Yeah, we can't jump that.
Hmm, hmm.
Why is this so ass, man?
Maybe here, then?
I'm just checking, I'm not...
Okay, I'm gonna do a little stupid alright?
Okay. Oh my god!
Hi, Mr. Pregnant!
What now? Huh?
I'm still working on that, what? I said, "Hi, Mr. Pregnant." I'm saying hi to Mr. Pregnant!
Mr. Who? Oh! You know what, for a second there? For a second there, I forgot we were streaming. Oh, I'll be hungry, uh, man. Is that good? Should I come over?
Yeah, I think it works. I mean, I'm here. I'm up here. Yeah, I think that works. Are you gonna be okay? Need me to catch you?
I'm good.
Alright. Can you come up here? Okay, and then, I think here.
Alright.
Fart! Watch out for the fart.
Oh, okay.
We got apples, though. Ooh, celebratory apple.
Yay! Quiz berry.
I ate one. I still have my marshmallow, though, it's okay. Um... King berry! Ah! My head! Oh, I'm too short. I gotta parkour for my food, I will. You don't know me, if you think I'm not gonna parkour for this fruit. Okay. Ow, it hurts. Worth it.
Worth it!
You got advantage.
Uh, I do, yeah. Do you want me to come down and give it to you?
No, 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 I'm coming up. Okay. Thank you! Alright. Let's keep going. Wow, luggage! Oh, chain launcher, you got, you got room for that?
Yeah, can you take the baton? I have two.
Oh my goodness. Oh damn, look, I did a bottle thing! You know that challenge, the super challenge, the bottle flip?
Yeah.
Um... What the fuck do we go? Hmm?
I'm gonna eat something real quick.
Oh.
I'm not sure.
Maybe vine again? Maybe vine up? But I think we need to wait so long. Oh, scorch berry! Oh, there's only one.
Fuck, okay, oh, eat, eat here, eat here.
Om nom. Should I just go? Huh?
Sure. I think I should be up there. I don't know, though.
I'm gonna try. Oh god, this looks awful, actually. Okay, there's like, a... A little platform here, we could stop by. And then, uh... Then what? I think we're gonna have to baton our way up from here. Either baton, or maybe fungus works too.
Oh, that's fair. We do fungus.
Fungus? Okay, I'm gonna do... I'm gonna do this here. Isn't that fine?
I'm sitting here waiting to pass out.
What?
So I'm sitting here waiting to pass out.
Oh! You need me to throw the lantern?
Nope, it, it should be okay, it's gonna be dangerous.
Okay. I should stand where I can't fall.
Said it's gonna be dangerous, man.
Yeah, I'm about to pass out, but I'm in a safe spot.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, actually, I'm stupid. I just need to let go of my backpack for now.
Yeah, I have my backpack on now.
Okay! We are so back.
That was the longest night in my, this year of nights, man.
No, for real.
You gotta wait, pick up my backpack? It's cold.
Get some sun. Okay.
Get some sun.
Beak. You pay me? You pay me? Watch for the slow mode? It's a, it, it's ascent 5, so the night is cold. I pay you? Okay, I gotta go, I'm stupid. Oh my god, Hika! I placed the, the worst fucking stupid mushroom on the planet! It got eaten by the platform! Oh, there's slow mode? Do we have slow mode?
Uh, oh, yeah. Why the fuck?
Oh, is it by default because of, uh... Of, um... Maybe because we're, we're, like, dual-streaming or something?
Oh, weird.
Alright, I'm going up.
Oh, this, yeah, this is weird.
This is horrible!
I mean, it still works, it's just...
Yeah.
Kinda, kinda weird.
Just like booty cheeks high. Ooh, whee! Okay, I think this way... Oh my goodness. Yum, yum. Yum, ah! I'm fine, not even scared. Yeah, I'm not sure why, Dante, I don't know. I don't think either of us have slow mode. Oh my god!
I'm sorry! I'm a little hungry.
You burp when you're hungry?
Yeah, it's weird, weird.
I just get irritated. I saw apples!
By default, so...
Oh, fair enough. Huh? Oh, that's where I saw them, okay. Apolis, I am a pretty hungry lil lad. I hope I can get a tick, so I can eat that shit!
Oh, come on, man, why does it do that?
I think it's because we're fat, so we just roll off the surface.
No, I just, that's not what I meant, but... That's not what I was referring to.
Yeah, no, no, that's not what I meant either. Who said that? Damn, child, you're ruthless.
The wind!
The wind! I think if we go up here, perhaps? Yump. Ow! I want this banana so bad.
What's a black cluster berry? Can I eat this?
I think cluster berries are always good. Aw, it looks like a boo berry!
Yeah, we're gonna eat it.
Oh my god, I fucking turned around and lost morale. I'm gonna cry.
You want a banana?
Yeah, I really want that banana. Should I go, get it? Oh, okay, crazy. It's gonna roll off the, okay. Oh boink, okay. What's this little tiny baby ass ledge, dude? Oh my goodness. Okay, I think maybe here. Turn around like here. Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
You good?
Yep, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Watch your, watch your head. I'm not gonna grab you, cuz it's gonna throw you into the vine. You just gotta like, kinda go around here.
I got it.
Aw, little baby ledge, please be real. Okay! Um...
Baton time?
Yep, baton time, I think.
I'll go.
Maybe after the rain, yeah. Can you, can you stand in that hole? Oh yeah, or that. This is fake, this, this thing is fake, yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if this is...
I started, I started doing the rain in here.
Alright, can go now. That's a, that's a pretty far baton!
Oh, hold on, fucked up.
Ooh, I don't know if I can do it... With the night? And my hunger? Oh wait, no, my hunger? I have my marshmallow. Okay. Okay, no, it's fine.
Oh, boy!
Oh, god, maybe I do it?
Oh, it's really far.
It is? Alright, I got a second baton. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We took over. Roll! Oh, this is rough!
Yeah.
Oh shit, wait, it's far, far! Aw, and it's raining!
It's night, I think we have to wait. I don't think we can make it.
Alright.
Do you set the lantern?
Yeah.
Cuz there's no way for us to do this safely.
Oh, can you scoot over to the side a little bit? Just so I can put it where it's like, flat?
Ow.
Oh.
This is rough, man, I hate this.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm done with the cold. We can just...
I wonder if maybe we decided on the baton a little too fast, and there's no, like, good way up here?
Yeah. You wanna try something else, or should we go here?
Maybe, yeah. Let's get a little bit of warmth. Then we can go.
How much is left on the map?
Not much. Alright. I'm scared, I'm so scared. The rain and I have no morale, this shit is terrifying.
Yeah. The rain needs to stop, bro.
Oh god, this shit lasts forever. There's a vine, maybe, I don't know.
Can I cross over?
Maybe the other side? Yeah, 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 you can, you can.
Oh yeah.
Maybe this works. Mm-hmm. Vine, and then hopefully we can get there. Damn, baton would've been really fucking nice for that! Oh!
I do have a chain launcher left, but...
Yeah. Oh, okay. Here goes nothing!
You're gonna have to help me up, I'm hungry.
Ooh! Okay, I'm good.
Oh!
That was rough.
That was almost the end of me.
Yep, me too. Uh, Jesus Christ, man. There's something in there. Wheeze! A whole lot of booty butt!
Yeah, there's nothing in here, but we can...
Um... It has to be this thing, but I, like, it's so far. I don't have no morale for any of this. This ledge above us, that we saw from a distance, I think it's this one. There's a ledge on top of that.
Can I chain launcher up, up there?
I guess so. You could probably chain launcher up, like, further.
It's not giving me the prompt. I think I can't do it that far, like...
Oh.
Yeah.
What if you go, what if you go up there? What if you go up there? Maybe you just need to not be as straight. Like, should you stand here, maybe? Stand on the corner?
Oh yeah, uh, like right there?
Yeah, just do whatever cuz we're getting hungry. Whichever you think is best. Alright.
Okay.
Hey, you know, when you know, okay. Um, alright. Where is the tick when I need to eat it? Ah!
I don't see any way up, man.
I think here, question mark?
Man, I'm very hungry.
Yeah, me too. Um... Oh god, it has to be like this little, like poopy ledge. Let's see, is there a work around this? No, of course there, oh! Wait! We're gonna eat poison, I think. Aw, there's one? Are you fucking kidding me? I could have it if you wanted.
If you need to eat it, just eat it.
No, no, you, you could probably have more hunger than me, just eat it. Please tell me I can stand on that. Alright, coming. Woo! Oh boy!
This is rough.
This is horrible. It's everything I hate. Okay, ledge here. Alright. You just gotta keep moving, cuz my hunger is hungering. Thank you. Yep. Okay.
What now?
The fucking petons, man! Oh my god, they would've been so clutch! Um...
Oh wait, 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 you can make it here.
Okay, 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 okay. Grab me, grab me, thank you.
He needed to wait for me for a second, I wasn't sure of my footing.
Grab me! Okay, this looks like a ledge, but this also looks very tall, like me by the way. Uh...
Uh huh.
Wow, no, 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 no! Okay, let me go, let me go, let me go, let me go, yeah. Okay, I think I need to let go of, make it.
Okay, put it in my backpack.
Well, I put it in the void, so...
We could also go there. This way?
How do you pronounce, you say that crèmeux? Why you... Why do you need to know that? Alors le, le, l'alcool, être un crèmeux, ah non, c'est crémo. Nevermind. Wait, why? What's the context? Why you need to know what crème is? Huh? Huh? Non, c'est crèmeux? Sinon ce serait crime, right? Huh? Non, je peux pas, maintenant je suis chanceux, maintenant je peux pas regarder sur YouTube. Wait, did you get up there? Oh my god, there's...
Nope, not yet.
Aw, there's um, there's kingberries. There's purple kingberries.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I can make it. I think I'm strong, oh!
I'm gonna need you to help me up here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh my god!
Yeah, my hunger is really high. I would just, oh. Thank you.
I'm gonna grab these fruits before I run out of stamina to grab them.
Yeah.
Uh... What is apples too? Oh my god, no!
No way.
I thought they were purple, they're not even purple, okay. Oui! I'm stuck. This is not very step, bro. Okay, it's gonna poison you. Oh, apple!
Right there. No, no, eat it, you eat it, oh.
No, no, I'm, I'm almost full, I'm almost full. It's just poison.
You are?
Yeah, yeah. I'm making it and wanting to pronounce it correctly for a camera, oh! Oh, yellow apple!
Nice.
Aw, there's two!
Go ahead and take the yellow apple.
There's two, there's two! One for me, one for you.
Thank you.
You take that other apple?
Oh my god, yeah, I did.
We're making it, we're making it, we're crazy! I think it's alpine after this cuz we did... Oh, nice, nice, nice. We did uh, the mesa yesterday.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ooh, okay.
Little pass out here, so...
Okay, it's okay.
Oh wait, I see a smoke.
Yeah, yeah, yeah! Yeah, that's why I kept moving cuz I saw. Yeah, wait, 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 wait! Alright. Time to sleep, I guess. Oh wait, I have a little bit of that. Just a teeny tiny bit.
I think we should make it.
And it's gone. I'm crazy, I'm crazy!
Aw, let's go! Oh my god! Fucking hate this.
Oh my goodness! I'mma eat it, I'mma eat, watch me, watch this! Oh my god! It gave me morale, it was, it was perfect! It gave me morale and uh, and food! Wow! Eat this. Where you at? Oh, maybe you should cook it, maybe it's better when cooked.
Oh yeah, maybe.
Oh my god, there's yellow! What? There's so many yellows! Yay! Alright, let's cook all of that. It's gonna be great cooked. I'm gonna bring it a little closer, okay. Do you want the lunchbox?
Uh...
Don't forget you're in marshmallow.
You don't want it?
Sure, here. Let me check if there's like a hidden... Sometimes they get generated a little weird. Okay, no, there isn't. Alright, oh, that's pretty good!
Oh, that was so clutch, man.
Yep. Can't, I'm still a little hungry, but I'll be alright. I guess I could eat.
I got three apples, so I'll go on one.
Okay, no, sorry, I'm full.
It's a, uh, alpine.
Aw, it's the mesa again. Aw, cappies? Question mark?
Oh, we didn't bring the bugles, though.
Didn't you get the thing? We could just go for the winter berry. The, the achievement? You got already, no?
Oh, no, 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 but uh, if you don't need it.
Oh yeah, I don't need it, but the, the cappies is always nice for just a winter berry. What, also it might be a mirage, so, we'll see. You good? Okay.
Yep.
Oh, well, that luggage was a mirage? This tornado is approaching and I don't like it. This luggage was also a mirage? Are you real? This is also a mirage? Ica, I hate it! Everything is fake! I wish the goddamn tornado was fake too! Ica?
I'm coming, I'm... Kinda dodging shit left and right.
Oh boy. Okay, I'm gonna grab this. Oh Jesus, oh my god! Shotgun! Yeah, he wants you!
No way, it's coming in here for me, man! The fuck?
Damn! I think he got a little crush on you. Hi Alex!
Well, you know, I don't have a crush on it, so...
Damn. Oh my god, why is it so sunny? Where's the shade? It's peaceful. Nope, no more. Nope, 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 not peaceful.
We gotta go, we gotta go.
There's a little bit of shade there.
Hi Alex!
It's Alex! Luggage, oh!
Oh.
You step in it?
Nice, do you want me to use it on yourself?
Nope, I, it worked on me too, I just need to step into the mist and then I'm fine. Okay. You want that lollipop?
No. I'm good.
I, I'm gonna take it just in case.
How long does the sunscreen last?
I, I don't know, but uh, it's a decent amount of time. Alright, we, we can go up here, Ica. Yeah, this, this one is a little lower than the others. I'm not scared of you. We're in the canyon now, you can't hurt, you can't hurt us. Damn, that terrain, that terrain going hard, me though, the tornado.
Oh.
Maybe here and then up here and then, something like that?
Oh, it says...
Oh.
Oh, what? I got on. Yeah, there's a ledge up here.
Okay. That's a ledge? I don't think that is.
I mean... Man. What was wrong, my bad.
Okay, I think this one works. Whoa, whoa, not if you don't jump, lemme ha- whoa! I, I scared, man, I'm scared.
Whoa, okay, yep.
See? Now you get it.
My character didn't jump either.
Now you get it.
That's crazy. Insane.
What are all these fake ledges? What the fuck? You okay?
Yep.
Ah, it's cold. Oh, we should've stacked up on heat, I forgot.
Oh yeah.
Oops. Well, let's get out of this canyon before we rest. Actually, I don't know if... We have the stamina to get out.
I think... I think we can go.
No, we have, I have the morale. But I kinda don't wanna spend that if... Possible to avoid.
Just a little, little area.
No, I wanna get up! I'm gonna get up! Maybe, maybe wishful thinking. Maybe I will not. Oh, you know what I should eat?
I'm falling asleep. Falling asleep.
Goodnight! Oh god! Yai, should I feed him? Hey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi.
Crazy fungus.
That's my bad.
You left your Pandora.
It got rid of all my cold, but it put me to sleep.
Oh, that's what you did. Wait, can I try, can I try?
Yeah. You did?
It ate all my morale. Bro, what the fuck? What is that? It can't remove morale?
It's so rude! Yeah, it's kinda like anything goes, I guess.
Bro! Fine, whatever. Fuck you too, aggro. My god! And why is it so far up anyways? Oh my god! Oh, Ica!
Whoa, why? Just keep going, it's fine, I'll make it up. Fuck this shit, man.
You think? Okay, I still have rope if you want.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Fuck this game.
Oh my god, bro, they, these devs, oh, this, ooh luggage, one, two, three, four! If it starts going, I'm gonna, mm...
What is that? Oh god!
I'm making chocolate crèmeux with, what is popovers? What is that? Yeah, that sounds crazy.
Popovers? I think they're like...
Oh, popovers. Ah!
I found a peton and a rope and uh, some...
Nice, I can't wait to start cooking in the sun so that we lose the goddamn cold. Pastries, another name is Yorkshire pudding. Eschound delicioso. Where are you? Oh my god, luggage. No, it's fake!
No, it's a fake one, yeah.
What about this one?
That one's a fake one too.
Is this...
No, that's a, that one's a fake one too.
Whatever. Whatever, lame. Alright, where you at? That was the last uh, charge.
Thank you.
Ooh, remedy fungus.
You're gonna grab that, right? I don't need to free up space?
Uh, yeah, sure. I can. I have one little space. Where is it? I got it. Why am I hurt? Oh, it's the fucking Pandora thing. I forgot. You're interested in some wild dawn parasol? Oh, it protects me from the, from the sun, I forgot!
Yeah, oh. Surprise!
Lugage. Oh yeah, there's dynamite too. Ooh, granola.
Granola, here.
Oh, stove! Oh, thank you. We should get that for the scorpions. We cook their asses. And we can warm up, drink the night, wait, stove is OP!
Yeah, you just, you're like, I think, I don't think you can pick it up again after you put it down, right?
No, you can't, and it also goes out after a while. Let's just avoid the scorpion for now, nevermind, there's so many, what the fuck?
I'm gonna go pick it up and throw it.
Oh my god, there's one more here, what the freak? Alright, it's fine. I'm stuck! I'm a cactus!
I wasn't even there, hold on.
Ah, it burns. It burns.
Hi.
Hello. I would like, I would love if you removed my spines!
Oh yeah. My bad.
I'm cooking, hold on. Oh, Jesus lord! Is there shade anywhere? Yeah, what's up?
Oh, yeah, over here.
Wow!
What are you doing?
I'm throwing the dynamite so it doesn't explode in my mouth! What do you mean?
Hey, stop moving! I'm just gonna leave you with the swords!
This is real mixed, dude!
You pick it up.
No, I'm full.
Okay.
Oh wait, I went up here. Where you at?
On the other side.
Okay, I don't know if these connect, but... Oh, maybe they do. Nope, I don't think they do. Oh, hi! Nevermind, it did connect. Oh, Hika grabbed me, Hika, please!
What the fuck happened? I'm trying to do stuff right now, dude!
Alright, well... Catch me and then do stuff, bitch!
It scared the shit out of me, man!
Ooh, what's in there? Wow, baboon! Baboon.
Do you have room?
No, barely. Sunscreen! Wait, are you hurt? I kinda wanna pop this fungus. I'm gonna let go of the... Do you, wait, oh no, you s- Oh, there's mushroom! Wait, Hika, you hungry?
I found a mushroom. I found two berries, too.
There's uh, three mushrooms here. Oh, I'm gonna let go of... You hate this place, the mess up?
It's about night, we can cook some of this stuff.
You want me to put out the... The stove?
I mean, I mean, I have a bunch of stuff we can cook, yeah.
Okay. No, the mess up is a lot of fun. Okay. I'm just gonna eat that one.
What was that? What'd you do?
I heal myself!
Oh! Can you give me a microwave for me?
Huh? Oh. Didn't you not cook it?
Thank you.
I didn't get thorns?
I did!
Oh, did you just remove them before I could see?
Wait, what?
Cause I ate, oh no, I didn't eat it, I just cooked it, nevermind. Nevermind! Oh, damn, it's all falling apart. Oh wait, the smoke kinda shows us where to go! There's a way up here!
Oh, hey, nice, okay.
Thank you. Ooh, dynamite, this is terrible! This is such a mean dynamite!
It is. Can you go up here?
Oh, there's um, there's a cave. Wait, I wonder if this cave goes up? There's a mineshaft, this seems longer than... I can make it, it's just gonna pop a bunch of morale. I'm here, oh!
Thank you.
Ooh, baboon. This is good, if, I'm assuming you're asking me?
No, I was, I was wondering if I should eat it and now I'm just...
I'm gonna eat one of my mushrooms. What options do we have right now for like, climbing stuff?
Um, I got a baton, I got a rope, uh... Yep, that's about it.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to jump this one, let me just look around. Maybe with full, like... Rested stuff, we can make it up here from here?
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't seem too high, it's just like, we're cold.
Yeah, okay. Let's just wait it out, then...
Let's stay now?
Yeah, yeah, no, stay close so it goes down quicker.
My bad!
Alright. Go ahead, Mr. Ballooman. Baboon. Okay.
Made it, barely without using any uh, morale, so...
Nice, okay. Hmm, there's a hole here, but that seems impossible to reach, so, maybe towards here?
Yeah.
We can make it.
We'll just check this little alcove here, just real quick.
Booty cheeks? I'm a little like, between, like, I'm in a, like, between butt cheeks. Oh, hello!
How'd you get up there?
There's a, there's a thingy here. You can stand between the butt cheeks of the mountain.
Thank you.
Look, there's a... Damn, it's clear? There's no dynamite? Oh, what the hell?
Oh, squash track. Come here, come here, come here.
Do you have morale?
I'm over here.
Oh, watch out, there's a dynamite there. Okay, does this go up?
Thank you.
Here?
Oh hey!
Hmm, oh? There was a little ledge, but I don't know if it leads anywhere, so maybe yours is good. Okay. Okay, yeah, let's go.
Be careful, the thorny vines.
Okay... Is there sky here?
I think we'll get to it.
Oh! The sky!
The sky!
I do have a sunscreen again.
Okay, nice.
Stand in the butt cheek. Oh, and then I think-
Yeah, and then we can just go up.
You think up from here?
Oh, or maybe here.
I don't know if that leads anywhere, it looks like-
I'll just, I'll just take it. Yeah, I think up there.
Okay.
Doesn't seem like there's anything up here.
Okay, let me just eat a little mushroom, okay?
I don't mind a little heat.
Yeah. I'm saving the sunscreen for... I think it's good if we stack up a little bit.
What if it works for lava?
Probably not, that's not how it works.
Well, I know-
Oh, it looks like... This, oh, I think this, and then we go up from inside.
Yeah, I think so. That was weird.
Oh, it's fort! Oh god, okay, yep. I'm okay, I'm okay. Ooh mushroom, oh, dynamite, dynamite, dynamite! Okay, maybe now is... It's sunscreen time.
Yep, absolutely.
Starts a little bit. Okay. I cannot wait to be in the Caldera, I'll be so really good, holy shit. I'm over this mess up already.
Mess up is like, the worst because-
It's so draining!
Yeah.
There's um... Luggage here.
Oh, careful!
I'm fine, I'm good! Holy shit. What you got? Oh! I should, are you hungry?
Uh, not right now, no.
Okay, I'm gonna eat that. Um, where'd you go?
I went to get the uh, other...
Oh, luggage?
I'll come back.
Alright, I went up here... To find more luggage. Oh, airline food!
Let's go!
Hey! Okay.
Hello.
I'm fine. No panic. I didn't think I was gonna lose you or anything.
Oh, there's food up there.
Playing with TNT is dangerous, just so you know, I got this in the bag! You hungry?
Are you?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna eat it. Can you get the thorns off me, dude?
Oh, oh no, it's an ass mushroom.
Can you get the thorns off me later?
Oh, my fault, my fault, my fault. Yes, sir. And blue. There you go! I'm gonna pass out.
Okay, I'm gonna pass out, so I'm gonna take off my backpack. So, how are you?
I'm great, how are you? You had a good day? Big productive day?
Yeah. So productive.
Ooh, production! No, that's not the productivity.
That's not...
Whatever, whatever.
Yeah, uh, morale, by the way?
Hmm, I have like, about half, a little less than half.
Okay, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna do this, so...
You know what, I'm gonna eat that. Can you take the spines off me, please?
Yeah. Why'd you move?
Because you couldn't find them! Are you hurt?
No, are you?
No, 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 just checking, cause I have a bandage. I'd rather save the cure all, or... Yeah, 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 let's just save it for like, emerg-, I'm sure there's gonna be emergency in the Caldera and, and the kiln, so... Alright, I think, start moving. Oh, you went this way? There's the outside right there, I jumped here, okay, that works too. Sun, please! Hello!
Oh my god!
Ooh, sports drink and a baton!
Nice.
You get the sports drink, cause I still have a, if you're here. Can you drink it? Like, is it gonna...
Yeah.
Okay. I don't want this, well-done parasol. However...
I grabbed a pair.
Should I...
Thank you.
Oh, you know what, we're gonna... Okay, yeah, sure, let's go there. Um, there's like, a little ledge here, so we can save a little bit of energy. Don't get stuck to the cactus. All good? Yeah, stand on that, and then, oh my goodness, where the freak? What?
What?
This is smooth! Oh, you on this side? Bro! What? What? I trust the process. Okay, I see, I see ledges, I see ledges. You gonna be okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
I will be okay.
I think we're there. We're very close.
I think so, I think, uh, this looks like it.
Hey, this is a little... Little steep. Okay. Yes, sir!
Can't believe we made it.
We made it out!
That was almost clo- that was pretty close for a second.
Yeah, oh! You wanna be my friend? I'm gonna let go of this. Actually, this is a lot of responsibility, man, I kinda hate this shit.
What, the bugle friendship?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm, true scalp puppies. It's not a problem with you believing in me. Alright, can I open this? Or light this up, I think?
Yep. Yeah, go for it.
Alright, we were told that the Caldera, this run is really easy, so... You best not be lying.
Will you take the thorns off me?
Oh, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, I just wanted to eat my last-
Yeah, you go.
Thank you. Alright, let's go! I'm ready.
Oh, it just looks, oh, I fucking hurt myself! I already know these bandages, they've been waiting for me.
Finally have a use. Yeah, it doesn't look too bad, it looks pretty good.
It looks pretty dense, yeah!
Yeah, it's really dense.
Dude, yesterday's Caldera was so, like, scattered.
Oh yeah? Oh, this is long.
Okay, I think, yeah. It's like, straight and a little bit off to the left, I think.
There's egg, and we'll be jumping there.
I still offset.
They don't really have the required for that stuff, so I'm just gonna do that.
Yeah, yeah. Good, alright.
Yep. I almost fucked myself, I didn't jump.
Oh god!
Yeah, that would've been really sad.
Yo, after all this-
This isn't, this isn't a hard, like, area to climb, like-
My mom says I'm, I'm pretty dense. Aww.
Oh, hey, night!
Hi, night! Oh, this shit gonna catch on fire!
How much you died, it's so long?
We can say, we can go to the side, bring apps. Is this, this, this seems a bit far. I know you were panicking, I know your eyes got wide!
Nah, nah, nah! Are you bitten monsters lately, or something?
Who's speaking to me? I can't hear. Oh, egg! There's a whole bunch of egg! Egg. He got? Oh.
Oh, fuck. Leah?
What?
I need help, oh my god! I need-
Oh no. Do I have heals? Does he have heals? Where's his backpack? Okay, wait, step one, leave this. Step two, take this. Step three, take this, leave this. Step four, where's his backpack? I saw it for two seconds, oh god, it hurts! Let me check his backpack, maybe? Ah! No, no, uh-oh, oh my god, okay, let me get out of here first. Oh, fuck, man, hold on, I'm- Do I have time? Oh, it takes so long, I think I just, fuck it, hold on.
Yeah?
Nooo! What?
I can't believe you left me for eggs.
What do you mean I left you for, I thought you were fine! You said just two seconds ago that you were fine!
Yeah, until we came up to this one.
Well, how do I know?
You didn't even check, you weren't even looking! You weren't-
You were talking to chat, you were, you were doing great!
It's insane! That you just left me like that, talking about fucking eggs.
Look, I got eggs, though!
I hate you so much.
You're not happy for me, I got eggs?
Nope.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm dead, you see this? I'm dead.
Ohio, Mr. Pirate?
Very angry at you. You know what, it's my fault, I was trying to follow you, when you were going way faster than I was, and I got caught up in the fire.
Um, it hurts.
I'm still mad at you.
Well, don't be mad at me.
Oh, oof.
I'm, I'm doing great!
I had so much stuff on me, too, I had the cure all and everything, oh, you have cure all?
I got the cure all back, yeah, I was trying to, I, I, I got, like, sad timing, because I, I had you, and I wanted to find your backpack, and then I just panicked, I only grabbed the cure all. And then I wanted to heal you, I, I think I had time to heal you, but I needed to just, like, hit all my fucking buttons, right, and I didn't.
Does the cure all, does the cure all heal fire?
Yeah! Yep. What's so fucking hip?
Leah does have them eggs.
I do got crazy eggs, look at this, mm, oh god, why am I burning?
Hurry the fuck up!
Damn, let me show chat my eggs, oh, why is, oh!
Oh, buddy. If you die because of that, you will never get a second time because of eggs.
Why can I say I just really like eggs?
I was gonna say, which unfortunately, is a little in character.
No, take that back. I don't like this. We're fine, we're fine, we're fine, hee-hee! Yippee! I made it, are you proud of me? Okay.
I'm both proud of you and a little sad.
Oh, you know what's, was really ass in this, it's, um, we don't get another backpack.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a lot less room for gear. I think I'm gonna let go of the bugle, to be honest, I feel like it's too hard to use in the kiln.
Yeah. That's a good point.
Oh, whoa! Now, now we're talking.
Can you get me up before you start picking up the loot?
No, it's inside!
What do you mean?
Look, you see a campfire? Oh, you're right.
Statue's right there.
I thought it was a campfire. Forgot, I forget, man, I forget that's how it works. Rope cannon, wait, you take the- You, what, what? What's happening right now?
What?
Did you pick me up?
No.
Oh, you were, you were walking with me! Here, here.
I guess I could throw a bandage.
I feel like, in the, in the kiln, if we get hurt, we're probably dead. Uh, okay, alright, I'm gonna take this longy pop, just in case it helps.
I wish I had a backpack right now.
Hmm? Oh. Yeah. I wish you didn't die.
Yeah, I wish you didn't believe me to die.
Yeah, damn. It's really you.
Why do I agree to play games with you?
Because it's fun, are we having all the fun right now, yay, look, we're in the killing, shit.
You left me to die!
Nah, who said that? It, it's the volcano speaking!
Crazy, man! Crazy.
Wow, marshmallow!
Insane behavior.
Let's have a beautiful friend moment around the campfire! Yay!
Friends here, can't believe it.
Okay, nice, cool, bro. I got lava right here, I'm gonna jump in it. Just wait. Okay!
Oh?
Yo, I answered the phone. Beep beep boop beep beep boop boop. Beep beep boop beep boop boop beep. Beep beep boop beep boop boop beep. I have rope left, I know. Aw, this looks so cheeks. Hello, welcome back! I went to the left. Oh, wait, 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 okay. I wish I had rope right now, I could rope you up like, pretty high, already. I didn't use a little, any drop of morale so far, so you should be able to give it to me, okay? Yeah. Huh?
I said, do you know if there's knights in the kiln?
If there's, oh, I don't think so, I'd be surprised. We're, we're like, inside a volcano. I don't know, I haven't gotten that far with the knight, but, I'm, I'm assuming not. It's hard enough as is, man! Did you? If you could just, like, get up whichever way, I think it's fine. Oh, I see you! You can go like, here, here, somewhere-ish. Oh boy, it's getting shit out of me.
Oh, Jesus.
Okay, and then I think here, and then from here, you can make it to where I am.
Like, jumping?
Yeah. You want me to, to go down, or?
No, 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 it's okay.
Okay.
Oh, the lava goes really fast, the flow-
Yep, yep, yep.
Alright, alright, go, 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 go.
Hi, dots, oh god, this is gonna use morale. Woo, oh, it burns, okay, I'm gonna go down.
Oh, I'm dead!
Oh! Okay, well, I'll make you proud! That dude was so fast, oh my god! Can you send me something to America? No, I can't! Oh, wait, he got the, oh no, I think I have to go the other way, too. Oh god, I, you had, what did you have? You had something, like, helpful, like, do I make this joke?
Rope cannon.
You gotta take risks.
I have the rope cannon.
Oh, that's, that would've been nice. Oh! Oh, you, oh! Oh, you wanted to push it? The lava is fast.
Yeah, I wanted to push it, I really need to stop pushing, because that's how I die in a kiln, everything will fire.
Yeah, yeah. It's okay. Oh, a bowgun, damn.
You know what I was thinking, on the way up here, I was like, if I had a bowgun, I would shoot it right now.
What the fuck, man, why? Because you didn't get one!
I have a bowgun.
Yeah!
Sorry, I should specify, on our way to the campfire.
Oh, you know what, actually, I think I need to keep this. What do I, you know what? I got cure all. Okay, um... Alright, surely this is the right way. Gonna try to keep my morale for as long as possible. I'm gonna baton my way up for now. I don't even wanna look down, dude, okay, well, I'm just gonna pop some morale then.
You're gonna have to baton, I don't think I see any ledges up here.
Fuck, dude.
You're fine, you got time. Yeah, yeah, you're good, you're good.
Okay. Not to pop too, this is horrible!
Yeah, you're good, you're good. Yeah, that was kind of a loop up wall, but I think, right now- Yeah, that was kind of a rough wall, but I think right now you're, you're okay.
Yeah, looks okay. Go down and up? No, I think I can make this one. Spare change. Spare change, ma'am. Spare change, ma'am. Why is it so dark? Is it because my bestie's gone?
I'm right here!
Ah, you know what? That cure all looked real nice right now. I'm gonna have to step on the... Oh my god.
No, can't you, like, right, right there? On the, on the edge?
Give me directions. I can't see your things.
Right in front of you, right in front of you.
Where did you see the edge?
To your right, to your right. Nevermind. Maybe...
Yeah, I don't... Yeah, no, I, I removed fish. Okay, this works. Oh, that's what you meant?
Yeah.
Okay. I disabled fish for the timing.
And I think there's a ledge up top.
Yep! Nice. Okay. Okay, I think I'll make it to this. This looks far. Okay. Okay. Oh, this is stressful. I fucking hate it. I wanna pee so bad! Oh! It was funny, man! I'm stressed out.
Do you have stress response?
Yep. It's a lot of response actually cuz I, it happens when I, when I laugh a lot, dude. Probably makes more sense, but... Okay, I'm just gonna eat.
You ever laughed so, like, so hard that you'd pee a little bit?
With you all the fucking time, yeah.
I'll take that as a compliment then, I guess.
Okay, I think I go up here. This looks nice. Oh!
Oh, that's like a nice little stairway up. Ooh, that is...
I got this in the bag! I got this in the bag! Ooh!
You scared me for a second.
Let go, stupid. Okay.
I think you have to do it from the outside. I think this way. Go to your right, go to your right, go to your right.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
I was worried that you'd get scared.
No, no, no. I was wanting to make sure I had some, somewhere to stand on. Okay. Okay! Um... Oh, hello.
I was like, can you guys see it?
I did not.
Imagine if they made it so that these, um, columns cracked, bro.
Bro, please stop. Please, I don't, I don't wanna hear this right now. I just... Why?
Maybe I should shut up in case they're listening, you know what I mean?
You know, Arrowcraft, man, they keep doing stupid shit! The whole mess up, and now you're gonna give them these kind of ideas? That's crazy.
My bad.
I think this is GGs.
Yeah.
Looks pretty nice to me.
Yeah. Apparently it would look nice if it wasn't a boost.
Aw, lame ass jump. Am I going too high here? Nah, I'd be alright.
No, I think you'll make it, you'll make it.
I'm saving my morale for partying.
Man, shut the fuck up!
Ooh, celebration candy, candy so... Wait. Cele- celebration candy? I got, I had a, yep, I had a French moment.
A French moment is crazy.
Oh my god, finally! We're out of Ascend 5 never again!
Yay! I've never actually done this and survived the whole way.
Me neither.
Like, on any different... What are you doing?
Oh, I'm sorry, like... I didn't mean to, damn.
I was just like, what are you, what's happening right now? Wouldn't it be really sad if we came all the way up here and forgot where?
No. Cuz, yeah, you know, I would if, if they didn't give you, like, a guaranteed one in the first, uh, thing.
Yeah, but what if, like, you die and then you drop it?
Well, then it's a skill issue. Why would I die?
I feel like you made it to the end on Ascend 5 and now you got the big ass ego.
No! Look, I'm sad. My bestie gone. I'm sad. I keep smiling. Wee bee! 2 more!
Oh my god, I unlocked all the sashes.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool. I mean, it makes sense, if you think about it, cuz you have all the debuffs, so...
Alright, now you have to do Ascend 6 and tell me how it goes.
No. I, I thought we both said this is how we end stream. You think I'm gonna do Ascend 6 right now? No.
No, I'm not talk, I'm not, I'm talking about stream. I'm talking about, you know, later, because you're definitely gonna hop on. I know you.
Must've been the wind. Must've been the wind. Let me out, let me out.
Must've been the wind.
Let me out, let me out. What color is this? What? Oh, damn. I go eat cuz you keep burping my hair.
I'm sorry!
Yay!
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go eat, I'm gonna...
End the stream.
Yeah, I'm gonna end the stream.
Okay, well, thank you for stream and work and...
Thanks for the stream!
Bye!
Bye bye, goodbye, goodbye.
Okay. Um, alright, we're gonna end stream here. Um... Oh, how do raids work? Speedrun with a cannon? I don't know. Apparently they fixed it? Apparently they patched it cuz, uh, I'm gonna snooze that. Um... It looks like they might've raised the fog, so I don't know if the cannon thing still works. I have, I never tried. I have not tried. Uh, we'll try to beat it. We'll try to beat it, uh... Like Ascend 6 and then 7. I don't know if live, cuz I like to run solo, but I also don't know if I can beat 6 and 7 solo, so we'll see. We'll see, but thank you guys for hanging out. Um, we're gonna call it here. And, uh, oh, this is a hi-bye riot, I'm sorry. I'm about to leave, I'm about to call it here. Um, I hope you had a good stream though. I, 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 I caught you live for a little bit. I, uh, didn't have time to say hi this time, but... I did catch you live. I hope stream went well. Um... Okay, let me see if there's anybody we can raid. I can still raid people, right? I'm not gonna send both chats. How does that work? Yeah, stream was fun. We did a little bit of work with, with Hika and, uh, and then we ended with one Ascend 5, uh, peak game and we won! We made it, we peaked. Um... I don't know who to send you to and I don't know how it works with, with, uh... The, the shared chat, so I think we're just gonna call it here. Um... Alright, before I leave, the last thing... Hold on. I'm gonna put silly music. Um... Last thing is pro gamer 2, absolutely not. Um... My preorder campaign is up for just a few more hours. If you guys are interested in grabbing a pin, uh, we got most of them funded. I will see if I'm able to fund a little more, um... On my own money, and if not, there's already a bunch that you can preorder if you were, if you don't want to preorder or you're unable to. Uh, all of the pins that are funded are gonna be released in store after preorder ship out. I'm having a little bit of issues, uh, with US shipping right now, but I'm hoping, uh, by the time the pins are ready, uh, that will be fixed. Uh, and if not, I'll find a, a, you know, temporary fix to at least get these sent out until there is a permanent one. Um... I kinda wanna see if I can play Hollow Knight on stream. Uh, I don't know if it's gonna be, it's gonna be next week or another week or anytime soon, but I'll probably try to play Hollow Knight and then Silk Song, uh, when that is released. And if not, it's just gonna be work on stream again. Whenever next time, whenever next stream is, um... I'm, I'm okay with doing stream schedules for now, so it's just gonna be announced again on Twitter and on Discord. If you guys wanna find any of those socials, you can find them at, uh, by typing soc, uh, exclamation mark socials in chat. Thank you, Huwina, for, for sharing your mercies adorable. Thank you! It is, I'm very happy with it. It's super cute. And people have been very supportive too, so that's nice. Um, yeah. Okay, we're gonna call it here. I hope you guys have a great rest of your weekend, uh, whatever's left of it. And, uh, I will see you next time. Okay, bye! Oh damn, now I'm muted. Oops.